First item on the agenda is a moment of silence. I'm going to give that over to Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For our board members and our audience, this has been a pretty significant month for us. We've had several staff members to lose loved ones to death. We have also lost one of our staff members. And then we've had some community members who are connected with the Charlottesville School Board and with the Charlottesville City School System to pass away during this last month. So we'd like to take a moment of silence. We have a long list of names, so rather than reading off all of those names, we would just like to have a moment of silence for each and every one of those families and individuals who are involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call for the board members? And the -- I am now accepting motions for approval of the agenda.
Does it move?
Aye. All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And we have an agenda. Now, I have no one signed up to speak during the community comments. Anyone like to stand and be heard for the community comments? Okay. You have three minutes. Please state your name and your address. Thank you. Just one moment, if you don't mind. Can we make sure his microphone is on? Is it green?
I'll start again.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Colin Learmonth. I live at 2303 Jefferson Park Avenue. I have a third grader at Johnson and a sixth grader at Walker. Every day, my daughter comes home from school with a simple blue folder. Many of you are likely familiar with it. One side stays at home and the other is returned to school. With her brother's experience as a guide, you can expect mostly the same thing in fourth grade, maybe with a three-ring binder. But my wife and I are generally pretty confident that all this important stuff is there, and if we have a question, it's an email to a teacher or a note placed in a folder. But then comes fifth grade. Language arts assignments are on the whiteboard in class, submitted to Google Classroom, only accessible from a student account but not a parent account. Math, it's a Canvas course. Dates might not be right, modules are not in order, so scroll down. Worksheets are photocopied, they'll be in your binder. Might be due dates on those, maybe not. Virginia Studies, also in Canvas, but the dates are off. Handouts are in the binder, might be more accurate. Science is in Canvas, but syllabus is actually for sixth grade history. Assignments are outdated, so check the notes. Band will email you. To keep track, your students should be really using the Agenda Book. It's organized like a Franklin Day Planner, but we really don't have time to explain how that works. This is a profoundly difficult transition for the student and parents trying to help them navigate it, simply knowing what they're supposed to be working on, when they're required, maybe required checking several sites, digging through handouts, checking in with friends. And if the child needs help with an assignment and there's no bookmarked textbook or anything to look at, you're going to have to go digging again, maybe Google what the Box Method is or what regions of Virginia is on the SOLs. My son's in sixth grade now, and the organization of his classes are largely the same. It's hard. I'm in the privileged position of being college educated, working with these technologies every day, and being home in the afternoons to be with my kids. I don't know how parents with less time or experience with these technologies can be active participants in their child's education, something I understand to be critical to the student's success. The city and the board are tackling many big, complicated issues, and necessarily so. I'm here to just ask that in the midst of all that, schools not lose sight of the day-to-day experience students and parents are having with the system, to encourage and invest in efforts to simplify that experience. Complexity, confusion, and frustration will drive down engagement with the schools. That's not good for the students, the schools, or this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Great. We are now at the public hearing for the 1920 budget. Is Ms. Chuck coming up to speak for the budget?
I am not coming up to speak for the budget. I'm really sorry to be late, and I'm not sure Josh is here, but I just wanted to call attention, very briefly, I'm sorry for being late, but I just wanted to call your attention that Josh Mandell, reporter for Charlottesville Tomorrow, this I believe is his last day on the job. So I just wanted to -- is Josh here? Am I missing him?
I haven't seen him yet.
I expected to be here tonight. So I just wanted to acknowledge his good work, helping the community understand schools and helping understand what's going on in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's he going?
He's going to Chicago. He's going to Chicago because it's really cold there.
Where?
Chicago. Yes. We're very grateful to Josh and Charlottesville Tomorrow for their resources devoted to education. So this is, I'm just going to open the public hearing again for the budget for the 2019 and 2020 budget. Anybody like to speak on the budget? So I'll go ahead and close that public hearing and move on to the next item on the agenda, which are students and staff recognition, the first of which is the Principals Appreciation Week. Dr. King? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Atkins. It is a time for our school division to come together because it had, at the end of last month, but we'd already had our school board meeting, we celebrated Virginia Principals Appreciation Week. It is a time that we recognize principals for their instructional leadership, as well as the critically important role they play for teachers, our students, and our parents and community, to making sure that they have in their hands, as the leader, the future of our community. So at this time, I have noticed that Dr. Hastings, is in the audience, that as I recognize our principals by school, I would ask that they stand. Sorry, Dr. Hastings, you should have known when I smiled at you. But Burnley Moran Elementary School, Dr. Elizabeth Corab; Clark Elementary, Deanna Isley; Greenbrier Elementary, Pat Colmo; Jackson Bia Elementary School, Dr. Justin Malone; Johnson Elementary School, Summerlin Thompson; Venable Elementary School, Dr. Aaron Kirchner; Dr. Adam Hastings at Walker Upper Elementary School; Beaufort Middle School, Stephanie Carter; Charlottesville High School, Dr. Eric Irizari; and Lugo McGinnis Academy, Jill Dahl. So if you will join me to give them a hand for all the work that they do for us.
The next item on the agenda is the School Counselor Week. If you would like to explain that to us a little bit.
Absolutely. So this is the week. It is February 4th through the 8th, 2019, and that is National School Counseling Week. It is the time as a nation that we come together to recognize the hard work, support, love, care, advisement, hugs that school counselors provide to our students. As a school division, we would love and appreciate the opportunity to tell each of them thank you. If any of them are here, I would ask that they stand while I read their names by school. Rebecca Baber, Burnley Moran Elementary School; at Clark Elementary, Chloe Wilson; Greenbrier Elementary, Taylor Trent; Jackson Bia, Kristen Olrich; Johnson Elementary School, Allison Pillow; Venable Elementary School, Malika Redden; Walker Upper Elementary School, John Kostain; Charlotte Getty and William Olrich; Beaufort Middle School, Stephanie Heath and Megan McDowell; Lugo McGinnis Academy, we have Maggie or Magda Wilson; Charlottesville High School's Counseling Department is Miss Carrie Avakian; Dave Wilkerson; Brianna Hill; Melina Melanie, excuse me, Key; Sarah Elaine Hart; and Lisa Morales. So if you would, please give them a hand for all that they do for our school system. Thank you.
And now I guess we're going to appreciate ourselves with the School Board Appreciation Week.
Yes. Thank you for everything, School Board Members, sincerely, all that you do, not just standing and representing our school division in our community and across our state and nation, but also the time that you lose from your family, the times that you, before you're going to sleep, that you're trying to develop solutions for us and problem solve. We greatly, greatly appreciate your time and sincerely, thank you.
Well, that was very generous. Thank you. And we would not be anything without the School Board Clerk Appreciation Week.
Absolutely. I mean, honestly, I should just say two words and we just all together say thank you. So I'm just going to ask everyone to stand up, please.
Circle around.
But the clerk.
But the clerk.
And I will say, thank you. Please have a seat, as well as our Assistant Clerk. And on the count of three, we will say thank you to Leslie Thacker and Julia Green.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you! Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. King. Appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda are board member comments. So I'm going to start with Mr. Bryant.
Not at this time.
Not at this time, okay. Dr. Kraft?
Well, I'll just mention briefly a couple of things from this past month. I represent the school board on the Community Development Block Grant Task Force for the city, and this was the month, the month of January, where we did the bulk of our work, which is to read applications from various organizations who are requesting funding for projects related to, particularly to housing, improving people's housing situations, to childcare, to other areas of city council priorities. And then we award grant money. We score the applications and award the grant money. And it takes a lot of time, but it's a good way to see what is going on in the community as well. So we completed our work for this year, awarding those grants. I have, I stepped in for Amy Laufer on the Prep Advisory Board, and I have some things to learn there, but, so it was a good experience and will continue to do that. And the most fun thing I did was go to the Burnley Moran Morning Meeting this month, which was about the most fun I could imagine having in the morning. It's the best way to wake up in the morning that I could think of. So that's it for right now.
Ms. Perier?
I had the pleasure of attending our induction for the National Honor Society, and several students that I knew were inducted, and it was a very nice ceremony. And thank you to Dr. Irizari and the school sponsors of that program. And I'm sure you will be hearing later, several of us had the opportunity to attend the Advocacy and Equity Institute, formerly known as FRNIE, Federal Relations Network, which was held a week, two, a week and a half ago in Washington, DC. And I think we learned a lot. For those that had never been, they learned a lot. And for those of us that have been before, we have our work cut out for us.
Mr. Wade?
Thank you. I just want to note a couple of things that I have, was able to do over the last month. Was able, early this week, to do some reading at Johnson Elementary as part of their Black History Month, and that was really nice. I attended several K-Tech meetings, had an open house a couple of days ago, and we also had some pre-agenda-type meetings. I went there, attended the class, which is the after-school and before-school meeting, and they're setting the course for the next year and getting a lot of information on that. The Charlottesville Scholarship Program, we sit on that board, and we're now in the process of about to review the applications for our wonderful seniors that are graduating. And I also attended the Advocacy Conference in Washington, it's an opportunity to meet with the decision-makers at the federal level, to have really a big impact on public education. We were able to meet with Senator Warner and Senator Kane, and we met with the staff of Denver Riggleman and hope to have some more conversations with him as well. And also attended National Honor Society induction as well.
Busy.
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Did nothing. I'll say.
Most of my comments were later, but I did want to, and I'm sorry I didn't catch your last name, but I wanted to thank Colin. Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns and your kids' experiences. So I hear you. It's a good reminder. My daughter's in high school now. I remember feeling exactly that as they transition and learning to navigate. So I appreciate that reminder. So thank you.
Ma'am, do you have any comments at this time? Okay, great. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the Consent Agenda. I'm accepting motions. Ms. Perier and then Dr. Kraft, second. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Moving on to the approval of the Program of Study, one of the more important elements of our school division.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Atkins. Last month, staff and secondary principals presented the Program of Study, and tonight, the superintendent recommends board take action.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any discussion or any motions on the floor with respect to the Program of Study?
I move for approval of the Program of Study.
Okay. The question is now open for discussion. Any?
I just wanted to add, I thought that the staff did a great job of really looking at the, kind of the whole student, you know, from Walker all the way up, and I like the way the principals work together, so I feel really good about the programs of study.
Any other comments or questions?
No, I just kind of wanted to echo that, so thank you for the work that was put into that and the thought, as far as some of those changes that we know and we need to remember will be challenging for the teachers as they start to integrate different levels of instruction in the classroom, as we really look and work towards providing a more equitable experience in the classroom. So again, I want to thank you for doing that and taking those steps, and please don't hesitate to reach out to us if you need more supports for those teachers as we implement those changes. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to just also include K-Tech in that recognition in some of the programs that they are adding. You know, it seems like, you know, they are really, you know, they're enhancing, improving. I love that they have a Vet Tech program now, that you can actually bring your pet in to see them, and I think they're doing a lot of hard work at K-Tech. They just had their Community Night also, which I forgot to mention, and they do nails, so, in case anyone needs their nails done.
Just alike.
Any other comments on the Program of Study? Yes, Mr. Bryant?
Also, I'm excited about the new courses for next year at Charlottesville High School, giving our kids an opportunity to expand their repertoire in terms of courses, and also I'm excited about the new courses being, that will be held at K-Tech for next year, expanding the curriculums. Great idea. Thanks.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Somebody called to question, I guess, the, all those in favor of approving the Program of Study as moved by Mr. Wade? Aye.
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 Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is, also, I want to say thank you, Mr. Henderson, and the staff here, the principals at the Walker, Beaufort, and the high school for all of your work associated with the Program of Study. I know it's a lot of work, so thank you. And again, I look for, I really appreciate the vertical alignment piece specifically, so thanks. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the interim school board member So we have three applicants for our, to replace Ms. Laufer as a school board member, and we are now going to give each applicant three minutes to answer two questions that they've been given in advance. And, thank you. And so the first person on the, up to bat is Mr. Mickey. And we're just going in alphabetical? No, not quite alphabetical. My first name maybe. Hi, Mr. Mickey, I have a question for you.
Yes, I'm Ned Mickey.
Okay.
Good to see you.
So you have, I'm going to ask you the first question and then the second question, if that's.
Okay.
Okay. So what do you hope to accomplish during the limited, your potential limited tenure on the board?
Well, as you all might guess, my main goal is going to be to make the meetings longer with overly detailed questions and.
Oh, you're really happy yourself.
Excessively repeating my.
How did you do? That's what we're missing.
In those discussions, I hope to help you all with the issues of the day, which I know that you have some that are particularly pressing, and those are the reconfiguration, modernization issues, and that's one that, as you know, has been very near and dear to my heart, particularly with the goal of expanding the preschool program and having it centralized at Walker. And I'm really happy that you all have been pushing that, and it sounds like there's some hope of getting some planning money from the city, but, so again, that's going to be going on in the next months, and I very much would like to be involved with that. I know that you all also have a committee on social equity that's going to be coming back with some policy and recommendations, and very interested in that and look forward to helping you work through that. And that includes how to reimagine the Quest Program, perhaps, and I served on the Quest Board before I got on the school board, and then I was on the committee when I was on the school board. So again, that interests me. You're going to obviously be having your annual policy renewal.
Already. I'm seeing it, right? There's like the time. I'm just going to ask you a second question, just so that I feel like I got the question out there, which is, what experience and skills do you bring that will serve the board this year? And so that way you can answer all of the questions in the next minute and a half.
So you all asked, said you were interested in somebody with experience, and so, you know, here I am. I think it would have been reasonable to pick somebody who doesn't have experience, and it looks like we have two good candidates in that way that have a lot of good experience, and that would be a reasonable way to go, if you want experience. I had that. I've also, since getting off the board, been more active in the other boards I'm on, and I think that kind of work is just helpful generally. I think that my experience is particularly helpful, and one of the reasons you wanted to have an experienced member is just to try to have somebody seamless, and I still know the current issues are still the same issues that when I was here, and I still know the players. And so I think that would be helpful if that's your, one of your goals. You all obviously know my strengths and weaknesses, and make your decision based on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mickey. Thanks for your time. Ms. Tekus? Okay, so there's three minutes to answer. I'm just going to ask the two questions, and then you can go ahead, and I apologize to Ned for interrupting him, but he's used to it. So what do you hope to accomplish during the limited tenure on the board, and what experience and skills do you bring that will serve the board this year? And, thank you.
So I wrote it down, so I tried to keep it in three minutes. I've been involved in the Charlottesville City Schools for almost 25 years. Our two daughters and four foster children all attended city schools, and I served as co-president of the Burnley Moran PTO and a member of the Special Education Advisory Committee. I haven't served on the school board, but I believe my previous service on the Charlottesville City Council from 2010 through 17 gives me institutional knowledge and experience to hit the ground running as an interim board member, and I'd like the opportunity to apply my experience to helping the city schools address some key challenges. One of the most critical issues facing our school systems is physical infrastructure. Our population is growing, our school buildings are aging, and our grade configuration forces children to transition to new schools at vulnerable developmental times. Significant financial investment is needed, decisions about which I understand very well as a former city council member and a member of the school CIP committee. I've been a fierce proponent of Charlottesville's public schools, both at the city council funding level and enrichment, when funding formulas and revenue-sharing challenges threatened our local schools. I served three years as Chair of Virginia First Cities, leading that organization to champion public schools and educational equity in the state legislature. Our other most critical issue is racial equity. When I moved to Charlottesville in 1994, I learned that our schools had Virginia's highest gap in academic outcomes between black and white students and between low-income and more affluent students. And although things have improved, those gaps persist and children suffer. It was at a Charlottesville school board meeting that I first learned that American 18-year-olds will have spent less than 15% of their waking time in school. Before and after the six-hour school day, in early childhood, summer, school holidays, and weekends, children are not in school. Schools may be entrusted with their formal education, but we must all work together and combine the efforts of government, nonprofits, social organizations, higher education, community and families, along with public schools, to make sure all our children thrive and succeed in school and beyond. From writing a grant proposal to fund the after-school program at West Haven 20 years ago, to helping to start the City of Promise in 2009 and the Alliance for Black Male Achievement in 2013, I've worked on the community side for educational equity because I recognize the public schools can't close the gap alone. That said, schools can and must do better. I applaud the important work that you've done for racial equity and will work to accelerate the elimination of inequities and disparities with evidence-based approaches and community collaboration. I believe my experience and my commitment to collaboration and community engagement can help the school board navigate this and other important work. Professionally, now I work as a writer for the National Institute for Youth Education and Families, researching and writing web-based publications for city leaders about best practices and municipal support for children and education. While on city council, I served as co-chair of the National League of Cities Council on Youth Education and Families, and was an inaugural member of NLC's Race Equity and Leadership Council. That's it. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Your clock is different than mine. And Mr. Scharf? Thank you. And we'll go ahead and ask you those same questions, which are, what do you hope to accomplish during your limited tenure on the board, and what experience and skills do you bring that will serve the board this year?
I should begin by saying that both of the other candidates are better qualified than I, and I would encourage you to choose one of the two of them.
That's a great opening.
Truly. I was delighted to see both of your names on the ballot, and I would gladly. yield my position. Having said that, I will explain why I gave my application and what I would bring to bear, maybe in the future at some other time on the school board, and certainly if I don't serve on the school board as a concerned parent and citizen. One of my priorities is to address safe and secure learning environment for students, which is the baseline for education in all contexts. One of my experiences, I taught in the New York City Public Schools, and I now serve in an operations role, and I know that you measure what matters. And so, tracking those leading indicators that show that schools are becoming more safe and more engaged are the things that I would want this body to see every time you gather. What is a dashboard of data on safety and engagement for students? Because those are the two leading indicators of learning. Second, I would want to, if I was on the board, and I will if I don't serve on the board, help to secure resources to address chronic overcrowding, especially at Walker, where there are more than 100 students in addition to the capacity for which the building was built. Since December, I've gone to city council and asked them to address that through their measures, and they are. I got an email from the, from Mike Murphy, I forget his title, saying that by the end of March, the site approval would be complete for Walker. That's their estimated date, so that perhaps by the end of this year, there would be additional classroom space at Walker. And then finally, I would want to improve transparent communication, so that parents like myself, I have one daughter at Johnson Elementary School, who will be going to Walker next year, and another at CHS, can know those things that they need to know, as was evidenced by Colin saying, how do I, an educated parent, navigate these five different ways of trying to understand my kid's education? Having been a teacher in a high-needs school, I have a ready knowledge of just how important it is to make it simple and clear for all parents, so that they can stay engaged with others. Finally, the last piece that I would bring to bear and hope to, as a concerned citizen, is the role of school culture in shaping our students, and the role that the leaders in those buildings play in creating that culture. So, thank you for your consideration, and I encourage you to choose one of my two colleagues who are much better qualified.
Love it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Thank you, Mr. Mickey. Thank you, Ms. Takas. I appreciate everybody's application of time and attention to this process. The next item on the timeline for appointing a school board member is that the next, February 7th through February 21st, we are going to individually consider nominees. And then, at our public hearing, I'm sorry, yeah, on February 21st at 5:00, we have an already scheduled budget approval session. So, the next item on that agenda will be approval of, an appointment of the next school board member. So on February 21st at 5:00 is the next official action of the school board with relation to this appointment. Any questions?
I just want to add a comment. I had the opportunity to work with each of the individuals that are applying, and in some form or capacity to deal with education and the community, and I just think that we're very fortunate that we all have, you know, a tough decision to make, and they're all passionate about education and just, and care about what's best for Charlottesville. And I think that that's what ultimately we need to move us forward. And so, I look forward to the discussion and a recommendation on the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Any other comments? Okay. So we're going to, yeah, so we'll close the public hearing with respect to the school board appointment. Thank you again for the applications and your, the public hearing process in general. So the next item on our agenda, we're going to move it around a little bit with the consent of the board here. We're gonna go from, to 11:03, which, we're gonna now make 11:02, which is the Summer Camps 2019, Mr. Henderson, if that's okay with the board?
Yes.
Hearing no objection. That's what we're gonna do. You see, I went to a, rules.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. Staff has been in discussions with Park and Recreation to transition the management of summer camps back to Parks and Recreation from the school division this summer. Presently, class manages summer camps at three elementary schools, and Parks and Recreation manages the summer camp at Walker. Ryan Daley, Director of Parks and Recreation, is here to give you an update on the transition, and Bev Catlin, Program Coordinator, is present to answer any questions involving class and the transition. Mr. Daley?
Welcome, Mr. Daley. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Atkins, and members of the school board. It's nice to see some of you again. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. As Mr. Henderson indicated, our staff in Parks and Recreation and with the assistance of the school staff have been discussing for quite a bit of time the transition and management of our summer camp programs going into 2019. I'd like to introduce Vic Garber. Vic is our Deputy Director in Parks and Recreation, who oversees our recreation facilities and programs. We have a PowerPoint for you that hopefully will be briefed to kind of outline where we are, and once we're finished with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions and engage in any discussions you'd like on the topic. So, Vic?
Thank you, Mr. Garber, and Mr. Daley.
Thank you, Brian. Madam Chair, Dr. Atkins, members of the school board, it's a pleasure to be here today. It's also, it's been a great week. Before I even get started, I just want to say it's been a great week in touring the school facilities, getting to know more about the principals, and what resources that we have available to us to better the youth experiences during the summertime. So, with that, I'll go ahead and kick off the PowerPoint, and then we'll answer your questions. A little background in history, it began, Camp XL began in 2006. I believe the former director of Parks and Recreation actually approached the school board, the school staff, and looking for a collaborative effort to provide even more for youth. Camp XL was then created for rising kindergarten third graders at three school locations for six weeks. Basically, at that time in 2006, the schools and Parks and Recreation split up the responsibilities and components. The schools hired the director and assistant director for each site. They hired five additional leaders. They paid for the trip admission fees, which means if they went swimming or they went to Bus Gardens, it was the admission fee that they paid for. They administered registration and revenue. They oversaw the planning and operations of the entire camp and provided the school facilities. Parks and Recreation then, on the other hand, hired 30 camp counselors. We basically interviewed, hired, and evaluated those 30, working under the director and assistant director, conducted the training week, coordinated the, and funded the pickup in the morning and take-home in the evening for the youth, and funded all the field trips, and purchased the uniform supplies, and managed the meals program, which included breakfast and lunch.
So that's what we've done in the past?
That is in the past. Going forward, in the future, Parks and Recreation is looking to, in collaboration with the school system, to hire all of the camp staff. We will be developing the program and the evaluation of such, managing the overall program, and working closely with the school staff on a weekly basis. And so, doing a kind of task our staff to be creative, and what names could we call Camp XL? It's a new day. And so, they came up with Camp Shenandoah. You should also know that they came up with our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade camps will be Camp Blue Ridge, and our seventh, eighth, and ninth grade camp will be Camp Skyline. That is all natural resource focus. It's all about outdoor education. It is all about hiking. It's all about camping, and it's all about getting youth outdoors. So with that theme, therefore, we have Camp Shenandoah. Parks and Recreation will handle all camp registration and fee collection going forward. The base fee now will be $55 for residents and $75 for non-city residents.
Per week?
Per week.
Okay.
There will be no processing fee of $15 per family. There will be no weekly wraparound fee, $5 or $20, depending on the sliding scale. No deposit fee of $10, or depending on that sliding fee as well, $10 up to $60. There also will be no 25% discount for additional, for additional children in the family, and we are not able to bill, so it would be payment at time of registration. Parks and Recreation scholarships are available to city residents only. Parks and Recreation will hire the camp directors and assistant camp directors, and continue to pay for all of the other expenses. The, right now, we're into budget for the remaining fiscal year, up until June the 30th. We will be absorbing all of your expenses, and there's no school contribution then. We have also submitted in our budget for FY '20 for the entire budget going forward. Unchanged going forward. Provide breakfast and lunch at all sites. Schools provide facilities. This year, we're working with Clark, Johnson, and Greenbrier Elementary Schools. We have toured Johnson and Greenbrier to date, and I believe we have Clark tomorrow. We will continue to offer AM/PM transportation, early morning pickup, and later evening drop-off, as well as pay for all the field trip transportation, which is not cheap. Also, work closely with the principals and summer school program, and I can't say enough about the school system and their collaboration and our partnership in making things happen for our youth. Camp Shenandoah registration. It will begin March the 4th for city residents, allows residents first opportunity to register, begins April the 8th for non-city residents. Register for each week or pick up and choose weeks. Registration will be held online via telephone or Parks and Recreation Administrative Office. We're also looking at the possibilities of holding registration at the housing community centers, possibly working with City of Promise. We do work closely with City of Promise, and so there's a lot of different ways we can reach those different areas that need to be reached. Again, this is a six-week program. It will begin June the 17th and will end July the 26th. One of the most important things about this program is getting the word out to the families, reaching out now. We've developed a parent handbook for all parents and guardians when they do register. We've developed camp flyers. We have all kinds of information. The schools are going to help us deliver to the various locations. We will also offer an open house to discuss Camp Shenandoah. These are just, I'm gonna say, Johnson is probably a definite. I'd like to look at Clark and Johnson, Clark and Greenbrier as well, so we can have open houses at each one of the programs instead of corporate recreation center. What are the benefits? All staff interviewed, hired, and trained will work under supervision of one organization. It meets our mission, delivery of quality recreation programs and experiences. It's a motivational factor. It's that carrot to get those children to go to the summer school and continue throughout the day. We want to be part of that.
Vic, can I ask you a question about that? So, they would go directly from the summer school programming at their particular school to the Camp Shenandoah after?
That is correct. Yes. Camp, summer school would be 8:30 to 12:30, then they would transition directly into our program.
Great.
And of course, it's an enhanced team effort for the betterment of the community. It's all about collaboration and our youth. So at this point, we're answering your questions.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I think it's, I'm very excited to see this collaboration, and I'm happy to have any, any of the school board members have any questions? Dr. Craft?
Yeah. Could you clarify what changes there will be financially for families, particularly for lower-income families and families with multiple children attending? What changes will there be from the way it is now?
Okay. Right now, we're looking at our basic scholarship program, which is under the federal poverty guidelines, and basically supported completely by Department of Social Services. We're taking that, and then Mr. Daley has a few comments as to how we're working that into the program.
Thanks, Vic. The Parks and Recreation Scholarship Program, that's been in existence for a number of years, provides access to individuals in the community where income may be a barrier. It provides access to programs, services, admissions, passes to all of our facilities. And it's good for the entire household, once someone qualifies. And there are different thresholds in our scholarship program. The highest rate of discount off of a fee is a 90% discount. So, if one family qualifies for the 90% discount threshold, they're going to pay 10% of the price of the program, or the price of the admission fee, or a pass to one of our facilities. For example, if you, a household is within the scholarship program, not only would they have a severely, significantly reduced fee for this program, but not only they would be able to buy a pass to our outdoor pools for the entire summer, 90% off of that rate, as well as any programs throughout the year, classes, instructional things, admission fees, and so forth. So, all of that, the scholarship program is intended to provide access to all of our services and facilities, and bringing this program in under that umbrella makes a lot of sense. Our, in this case, the, for, to kind of crosswalk what the fee would have been, let's say, in 2018, at the lowest threshold, which was $5 per week per child. On top of that, the school division was charging an administrative fee, plus a deposit fee for each child for each week, and those add up to what it would be over the course of, you know, a six-week period of time. In our proposal, our fees are $55, so the fee is not $5 a week, but it's $5.50. However, we are not charging an administrative fee for registration, or a deposit per child, or any additional fees for wraparound care. So, for all of the individuals, even if you had up to six or more children in your family that you're registering, the cost per child would be less in 2019 than it was in 2018 for each of those.
Even without the 25% discount?
That's correct. That's correct. Just to give you an idea, I ran some numbers today. For those who are at the lowest fee rate, the cost per hour of experience over the course of a week is actually less than a dollar. So...
Is there an opportunity, I know that we've had in the past, donors provide a lump sum, say, to, to support families who are in that lower income brackets, to pay the $5.50, for example? Would that be something that you all would be amenable to?
Absolutely. And if you can send those folks our way, please.
Okay. Have a question.
Yes, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you so much for working with us. I'm pretty excited about the transition of the program, and I think it's going to be exciting to be able to offer our families so many additional weeks of service. That's going to be exciting and helpful for all of our community. Because the registration for the program is now going to filter through Parks and Rec, tell me again how we're gonna get that information back to the schools or back to transportation, so that they can set up those bus routes?
Well, we're gonna be actually working with transportation now, and setting that up with the Department of Transportation. We're, again, we're getting that information. The flyer will be finished tomorrow. The handbook is done. We are ready to roll starting next week. And I'll just be getting with Bev and her excellent staff, and we're gonna start getting that word out ASAP.
That sounds great. So I want to reassure all of our parents it will be seamless. We'll stand shoulder to shoulder with you to support all that you're doing as we go through this first year of transition. So, thank you so much. So thank you so much for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. I'll also add that in this transition, there will be multiple methods for folks in the community to register, not only just in person, but you can go online. You can use our Parks and Recreation app. If you download that from the Play Store or the Apple Store, you can register through our app to... For all of our programs and services. You can also fill out the scholarship application online as well. So we're trying to open those avenues for folks to register with us. And thank you, Dr. Atkins, for your commitment to providing your assistance and your staff's assistance to getting the word out through the schools. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a couple of questions, please. So during the registration opportunities, if someone... If a family is interested in the scholarship form or and/or if you're handing out information for registration, are there materials or information that they need to bring and have with them so that they can fill that out on the spot? Or can you make sure that that information is included?
Of course.
Absolutely. We'll make sure the information is included. We're looking now at the possibilities, like we said, at various housing sites. So I think that... And we'll have signage, but we really can't get the word out fast enough and enough words out in order to reach the folks that really need to hear the message. I know there's a lot of people that can hear it, but it's reaching the housing sites. It's reaching those areas that's really tough. That's where our challenge falls. So that's where we're going to really need to work together.
Additionally, in the online application for our scholarship program, you can upload the documents that would be required, whether it be a copy of the most recent tax return or W-2. Those can all be uploaded onto our website, and then we receive those, and we will process those on a daily basis. So at any point in time, any family can apply for the scholarship program, and we will process them and notify them within 14 days. So at any point in time, that can happen. It doesn't have to wait until the time to register for this program. So that may be a word to pass along as well.
So when you say housing sites, are you going to be having folks to go directly to the community centers and those with registration forms and computers to enable those folks who may not have access to internet to register?
That's not coordinated yet, but we are working on that now.
Okay.
It says there's like three open house dates. And just to make it clear, those are correct, right? March 7th at Carver, 5:30 to 7:30. Johnson Elementary School, Monday, March 25th, 3:30 to 5:30. Are those accurate?
Those will be changed.
Those will be changed?
Yes. What we are doing is we are looking at offering... And Bev and I had that discussion today while we were at Greenbrier. I think it's more important to make sure that we have registration at the site of the school and not Carver Recreation Center.
I see. Okay, good.
One other question. Did you get to finish, Lisa?
I can circle back around.
Just... I'm wondering if any of this information... If you have any of this information in Spanish or accessible to our Spanish-speaking families for those who might want to participate? Or what kind of help would you need to do that?
If the ability is to go online, Google Translate is embedded into all of our information, so that option is there. We have not produced materials, documents, in Spanish. We can certainly look into that. If there are other languages that we need to potentially look at, that would be helpful to know those as well.
We'll be more than happy to work with you.
Thank you.
And I would encourage you to also work with, you know, the school's already contacts, Sheila Sparks and Velvet Coleman. They've already developed some rich relationships in the community doing other things, and it'll be easy for them to, you know... Because they're familiar faces with the families that I think you mentioned that we really want to reach.
Great.
Ms. Torres?
Yeah, I did have one more question. I apologize. So I'm curious, and I don't know, maybe Ms. Catlin, I don't know if you can address this or not, but just curious the difference in the fee structure or fees compared to what Camp XL was. Are they pretty comparable, less?
That's what he was just saying. Yeah, there's not a wraparound service fee. There is not the deposit. And then there's... It's 10% if you have a scholarship. But is that what you said?
There's different thresholds to our scholarship program. The discount ratios are 25, 50, 75, and 90%, depending upon income and the number of individuals in the household. In our analysis, almost every price point is less, and in some cases significantly less. But our scholarship program income thresholds don't exactly align with the sliding scale that Camp XL has used in the past. And we've identified a gap where we think we may have an issue, where in a certain income strata, where the fee might have been lower than what was shown in our scholarship program going forward, that we'll make sure that we address those things and that those folks in that strata, that they'll get the rate that is comparable to what they were paying last year for this season, and try to then move forward in transitioning everybody into our scholarship program. I'd encourage you just to look at that online real quick, just so you can see on our scholarship form what the thresholds are for discounts and the income. And we update those annually, and they were actually just updated about two weeks ago.
Madam Chair, I have a question. In doing things online, or whether you choose to do them on-site, I hope that there's someone there or there's something on your online application that addresses security. Many persons are concerned about their individual personal security, and if they bring tax forms, you could potentially get the names of the students, but there may be a way that you can ex out or, you know, extrapolate out any of the pertinent data, i.e. social security numbers and things of that nature, and that your persons that are on-site in order to interpret are able to interpret that information for the parents that are there.
Thank you very much. That's an excellent point. We do not keep that data. Even when we're processing scholarship applications, we do not keep that information, nor do we keep social security numbers in any of our recordation systems or anything like that. But thank you for bringing that up. We will ensure that as we're registering folks on-site that we're cognizant of that. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure that we are having three sites. Are there limited spots, is the question?
Yes, the capacity will be 120 per location, per week. Same as... Well, actually, it's close to before, but we're leaving some leeway for that last minute for that principal to say, hey, we've got five or 10 that really need to come in. We're going to allow that flexibility for that last week.
Okay. So it sounds like it's... It would be very helpful to have early registration so that you can kind of know where you stand with respect to those last students.
March the 4th is city residents, and April the 8th will begin non-residents.
So March 4th is the city residents. Start registering your students early, March 4th.
Yeah. Back to the Spanish-speaking families. If you contact the organization, Sine Batereras, and tell them about, you know, that you are, you know, starting registration for the summer programs and any of their families in the city or even non-city residents, they will help the families go through the process of registration.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate the city schools and the Parks and Rec working together on this. It really, I think, will help the parents understand more clearly what the choices are for their summer, for their students. So thank you again. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. This sounds really good.
Great. Good luck, have fun.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's proposed budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is our pleasure to present to the board tonight our funding request for the 2019-2020 school year. The board has seen this presentation on a number of occasions, so Ms. Powell is going to go through the presentation and be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. Welcome. Thank you. So as you all know, but for the benefit of those who may be new to looking at our budget, everything that we do throughout this process is guided by our strategic plan, which is built on, you know, three major tenets: academic excellence for all, safe and supportive schools, and organizational supports. Those are our different focus areas, and much more detail is available about our strategic plan on our website. Recapping the process up to this point, budgeting, for those of us in finance and actually everyone who manages a budget within our school system, budgeting is really a year-round activity. And budget management certainly is a year-round activity. But the process of developing the new budget in earnest, it begins in October when we set up the calendar and determine, lay out all the various meetings. Then there's a lot of sharing of data and a lot of gathering input from the various stakeholders. And the slide that's up there now just recaps for folks who may not know all the different official meetings that have been had in public input sessions so far. Looking ahead from that, by the time we get to late January, we've done a lot of active listening, and there is a Saturday work session. It's about a half a day, and that is when the preliminary proposal is put forth. And then we go forward from there. There was a very important joint work session with city council, and all of that leads up to this evening when you... When the public is provided with a first look, if you will, at the superintendent's budget proposal. We're certainly not done. There's an additional work session scheduled next week. And then the school board will officially adopt a budget proposal to advance to city council on February the 21st. Council is officially presented with that proposal on March the 4th. And then the city actually adopts their budget around the middle of April, slated now for April 15th. In addition to our strategic plan, everything that was done or considered through this process was evaluated through a lens of equity. And we certainly... We're thinking about maintaining our competitive salaries to attract and retain the highest-quality staff to execute our mission. The living wage rate for all employees that are appointed annually, that was also a significant focus area in this budget process. And then certainly, our mission to provide comprehensive programs for the needs of all learners. So now we arrive at the details of the budget proposal. This is our operating budget proposal. And we start the process every year, looking at what are the nondiscretionary items that just have to be addressed. And these items include addressing the health insurance increase and medical inflation, which is always a consideration. We have certain major contracts with the city, namely transportation and maintenance. We need to address those each year. The Piedmont Regional Education Program is a significant regional effort to address special needs for students, and these are required services. Our K-Tech partnership is something we also need to look at annually and address the needs there. We do have rolling... The fund balance is just something that has to be recognized each year in the budget. It's... The fund balance is the culmination of the pluses and minuses of the whole previous year. And at this point, when we develop a new budget, it's recognized in the new budget. And then we look at every other line in the budget, all the little contracts, the smaller things. And there are pluses and minuses throughout that exercise, which is something we do over the course of many days. And the net result of that effort this year was a savings of a little over $97,000. We move from the nondiscretionary items in the proposal now to look at compensation. Dr. Atkins, would you like to speak to the compensation?
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Compensation, one of the goals and priorities in this budget is to have all of our employees to move up to a living wage. And in Charlottesville, we consider that living wage $15 an hour. There was an effort in the General Assembly this year to advance a bill that made that living wage amount statewide, but that bill has failed in the General Assembly. However, in Charlottesville, we're still committed to moving our employees to the $15 an hour. So what we'd like to do is follow the governor's office in recommending a 5% salary increase for our teachers, and that would be a step plus 3.75%. We would move all other staff up one step plus 2.75, for average of a 4% salary increase. For our custodians, our instructional assistants, and our nutritional staff, we would recommend moving that entire group of employees to our $15 an hour starting salary. And you can see that to make those moves would cost us around $423,000 to make that effective. When we looked at, for example, our custodial salaries, in order to get our custodians at a starting salary of $15 an hour, we literally had to go up nine steps on the pay scale from the beginning salary. So you can see that moving our custodial instructional assistants and nutrition staff to the $15 an hour is a priority in this budget and that we feel that it will make a significant difference in the lives of our families. We certainly would like to do more, and it would be our intent as we go into subsequent budget years that we would be looking to do more to support our families. Other recommendations that we have in our budget. This year, Dr. Iri Zari was very excited to let me know that 85% of our students who are at Charlottesville High School in our Avid program have currently been accepted to one or more colleges. That's 85% of our seniors. So congratulations to all of those students. I am sure before we get to the end of the school year, 100% of them will be accepted at one or more colleges or universities. So we would recommend to add an Avid teacher. We already have one at Buford. We would add an additional Avid teacher at Buford. We would add a math specialist that would service Walker, Buford, and the high school. We would also recommend adding an additional instructional assistant at Clark that would help in our CO class, our social, emotional, and academic learning program, which will be moving up to second and third grade next year. We would also like to say thank you to our community support for the Walker Swim team. And as that community support diminishes, the grant funding that we have diminished, we'd like to pick that up in our budget, so we would increase the support for the Walker Swim program. We would also increase our special education transportation services line. Currently, if we have students who are receiving services outside of our school division, as a school division, we are responsible for that transportation. And we have, for example, students who receive services in Richmond, Virginia, and we have to do contract services for the transportation of the students. If we have a student who is in our school system and is homeless and moves outside of our school division, that student is guaranteed continued transportation to our school system for the remainder of the school year. So we have students who may have moved to another county or 20, 30, 50 miles away from our school system, and they still have the right to come back to our school system for the remainder of the year, and we provide that transportation. So we would like to increase the transportation line also. We'd like to add one ISTEM, that is a teacher for our science, technology, engineering, and mathematics program at our elementary school level. We currently have four ISTEM teachers that are shared amongst the five elementary schools. And this program has become very popular. It is our goal to have one ISTEM teacher in each school, so we would add one that will give us four for the six schools and look to add an additional one in subsequent budgets. We would maintain our Avid program. We currently receive the board 10-sly grant, and that grant is going to diminish next year by $25,000. So we would have to supplement the Avid program with that line item there, $25,000. Maintain the extended bridges to obliteracy program. Again, that program started through grant funding from the state, and we would need to supplement that as the grant diminishes. We would add a pre-K2 family connections facilitator. We currently have one. If you've ever seen or met Velvet Coleman, she goes out to our homes and meets with our families. She's at bus stops. She conducts college workshops, college community workshops, parent workshops. She's a real factor in our community, and we'd like to add another position to give her support and more support for our families. We would also like to move the de- We would also like to move the Department of Transportation back under the Charlottesville City School System. We subcontract with the city of Charlottesville, and they've done a wonderful job for since the 1980s, 90s. The transportation has been run by the city of Charlottesville, and we appreciate all that they have done and currently do. In order to have more flexibility in attracting drivers for our buses and providing the services for our students and families, we would transition those positions back over to Charlottesville City Schools, and it will be, the start of that transition will be around $18,000. Security improvements, we usually get grants from the state, but when we receive grants for security enhancement, it is a requirement that we have matching funds. For the 1920 school year, we will be intending to apply for a $200,000 grant, and our match on that grant would be $75,000. Family connections, that's the pre-K family connections facilitator. We'd like to have our line item so that they can purchase materials to work with our families in our homes. Increased tuition reimbursement. We have several of our instructional assistants who have indicated that they have an interest in upgrading their skills and their college credentials so that they can become certified classroom teachers. So currently, we offer $500 in reimbursement for courses that our employees take. We would like to increase that to $1,000 a year and encourage our instructional assistants to take advantage of that and give them support if they would like to become a classroom teacher. Maintain our WALK program. That is the program at the high school that works with seniors and underclassmen to make sure they stay on track for high school graduation. There is some Title IV dollars that, again, is diminishing, and this would represent filling in the gap where we will not be receiving those Title IV dollars. We would be filling in the gap left by that. We used to have a trash and compost program here in Charlottesville City, and because of varying factors, we were, had to discontinue that relationship. But by popular demand, we have found a vendor who can provide those services, so we will be bringing back trash and compost services to our city schools. Because of enrollment, we would be recommending to add two teachers to Burnley Moran. Our projections show that Burnley Moran is continuing to grow and will need two additional teachers next year. We would also recommend adding a, one teacher at Jackson Byer, again, due to enrollment in, student enrollment, increase in student enrollment. We would recommend to increase our substitute pay rates. Many of you may have heard that we do struggle in getting substitutes to cover all of our needs on a daily basis in our schools. So we've looked at the rate of pay for our substitutes. We currently pay on a daily rate, we pay $85 a day for our substitutes. We would like to increase that rate of pay to $91 a day, and as it currently stands, that would make us very competitive in the region. Once a teacher has substituted 11 days in a row, the current salary for 11 days and beyond, which we consider as a long-term substitute position, we currently pay
I'm not sure
$207 a day.
It's going to 220. I know what the new rate is.
Thank you. We currently pay $207 per day, and we'd like to increase that rate to $220 per day. We would also like to restructure our new teacher mentoring program to provide more direct support in the classrooms and with our novice teachers who are coming in. And I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Powell to finish up with the school operations.
Certainly. So for school operations, we have three items. The first represents the annual maintenance and support fee for the new enterprise management system that we successfully brought up on July 1st. So we're moving from the implementation and development cost into a structure where there's an annual fee that needs to be addressed in our budget. The next item is the network bandwidth expansion. The demands on our network simply continue to grow as our technology infrastructure continues to expand, so we need to keep pace with that. And the third item is two-factor authentication, which is related to network security and security for all of our applications. Putting this into place will enhance the ability of our staff to access applications that they need when they're outside of the school network and add an additional layer of security in that process. So we're very excited to bring that online, but there's, there are annual fees associated with that. The last item is just us reflecting the fact that when we do analyze enrollment patterns across the division, and we look at what our models are showing, there are more increases and decreases, but we do project a decrease will be able to happen at one of our schools, and so that is just noted there. So we, all of that was about the expense side of the budget proposal. On the revenue side of the budget proposal, we are anticipating a $554,168 increase in state funding based on the governor's budget proposal. We always really have to lean on the governor's budget proposal to develop our budget because we don't have any better information than that at this point in the process. And then, based on looking at all of the various local miscellaneous sources of funding, some of those were mentioned during the expense piece, certain grants are going away and different things like that, looking at the pluses and minuses throughout those miscellaneous fund sources, we see a decrease of $75,251. And all of that leads up to a net funding request from the city of $3,868,421. The total change, if you will, or increase in the general fund budget for this proposal is $4,347,338. And certainly, as always, local funding is the key for Charlottesville City Schools to be able to do what it does for the children of this community. It's true for every community across the Commonwealth, that the local support is what makes all the difference in what the school system can or cannot do.
Ms. Powell, I'd like to add one comment, that if we go back and look at, $3.8 million is the second highest request that we have made to city council in about the last 13 years. However, in this particular budget, if we go back up to the compensation line, the vast majority of this request is in compensation, and to get our employees to that living wage and to follow the governor's recommendation of the 5% increase for our teaching staff with the idea that we want to attract and retain the best teachers in our school system. So those areas alone represent $2.6 million increase in our budget.
And what you just commented on, you led right into it. There's a summary slide that we've, we've incorporated in this presentation for the public that takes those different sections of the budget proposal, and you can see the big orange slice of the pie is all about compensation. And then 14% are, represent those non-discretionary expenses and contracts that we need to maintain. 22% of this request are, is that long list of items that Dr. Atkins reviewed, the school-based programs, supports and improvements. The net of all of that, the one, the, the net is because the one teacher that we're planning to decrease at the very bottom, that's reflected in that 22%. And then school operations, that little piece I went, I mentioned about network security and bandwidth and the enterprise management system, that's the 2%. So that is a graphic summary of what was just discussed in detail. So this just summarizes all of the numbers. We focus on the general fund in our budget development process, but there is a separate piece that we also have to address, which are the special revenue funds. These are federal, state, and local grants or monies like our school nutrition program, where they're, it's self-contained. It's money in, money out. These are monies that are for specific purposes, and they don't receive the same attention as the general fund does, but it all has to come together and create a balanced budget. And the total budget proposal at this time, general funds and special revenue funds, stands at $88,555,130, which would represent an increase of a little over 5% for the total budget.
We have, we have seen these before, so are there any questions or discussion items, Ms. Perrier?
I would just like, I would just like to comment on the fact that we are in the process of attempting to embark on equity, and we're looking at equity from several different lenses as it relates to education of our students and our staff, but also as it relates to our overall division. And by looking at the $15 an hour for the living wage, it is another step towards us being equitable to those families and those persons working within our division that are often what we call our unsung heroes. We have to be very grateful that all of the parents send their children to us. We are grateful for our instructors and all of the people in the building, but the people that often may be overlooked are the people that we are continuing to try to make whole. And when you look at our school division in relation to others in the Commonwealth, not only will they receive the $15 an hour, but they are also eligible for benefits. And often, part-time employees do not get benefits. And so I think that this is a way that we are attempting to show everyone that we are trying to be equitable in all facets of the division.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier. Any other comments from Ms. Powell? Yes, Dr. Craft?
Well, first, I would like to thank Ms. Powell and Dr. Atkins and all the staff. This budget has been very carefully developed and very thoughtfully developed with lots of input from, from different stakeholders. And yes, the board, we've been exposed to this, and we've, you know, we've, we've heard and we've learned, and we've had a chance to look and think about it. And I think that we're at a moment now in our community where, you know, this is very important right now for our entire community, and we really need our community. We need our parents, we need other members of the community to step up and support our school division in, in fully funding this request. Because, you know, we're being asked to do a lot. We're being asked to make sure that all of our kids are succeeding and achieving and, and learning. And we're also being asked to, to help with some of the significant emotional barriers that some of our kids have, barriers to learning, and so we have to do that too. And that requires, you know, a very, very concentrated effort from a lot of people and, you know, the best, the best staff that we can get in order to do this. So I, I think this is the moment for our community to step up and support us and support this budget. It's a great budget, and I really appreciate what's gone into it, and I'm fully behind it.
Any other comments on the budget at this time? Just want to note that we have a work session next week on the budget, so this is not the last opportunity we have to discuss it. It's at K-Tech, and it is on the 12th of February at 3:00. So that's the next time that we're going to be seeing and working with the budget.
Ms. McKeever? I have one more comment about the budget, and, and thinking about what Ms. Craft just said, Dr. Craft just said, in our WALK program, I'd like to acknowledge that it looks like a large dollar amount, the $30,000 supporting the WALK program here at Charlottesville High School. But, but I'd like everyone to know that we have an abundance of community support in our programs, and we have donors in our community that support all aspects of the work that we do. And I'd like to acknowledge that we've had two donors who have worked diligently with our WALK program over a number of years. I believe they started with our program during its inception probably about 10 years ago, and that's Sonia Smith and Dorothy Batten. We have, in our WALK program, we have a social worker position that is paid for through the philanthropic efforts of these two young ladies. They have worked with us, they, they donate funds so that Diana Poe, who's the coordinator of the program, so that she can pull on those funds when a student needs gas for transportation to go to work, that's in our WALK program. Or a student might need a necktie, or shirt, or a pair of pants to wear to an interview or on a special occasion. And these individuals have stepped up each year to support our program. And that's just one, one example, or two examples of the extraordinary care and attention that we get from our community and the support that we get from our community. So I want to say thank you to everyone who contributes to the work that we do in Charlottesville.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Thank you, Ms. Powell. No further discussion on the budget at this time? Go to the next item on the agenda. Yeah, I was going to note him at the end, if that's okay. Josh, now that you're here, we're gonna, we're gonna note you at the end.
We're gonna make us feel guilty.
Because we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, this is like another four hours to go, but. So the next item on the agenda is comments from members of the community. So this is an opportunity for those who did not have an opportunity to speak before, can speak now. Anybody? Please, if you are interested, please come up, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to talk. Please. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Laura Tate Santiago. I have been a resident of Charlottesville for 15 years. I currently live on Jefferson Park Avenue. I have three children in the public school system in Charlottesville, and I'm here today to speak as a parent, but also as a mental health professional, to alert the board of some concerns we have about Walker Elementary School. I am here with a specific request as well as to advocate for additional resources for the school. My oldest child transitioned to Walker this year. It has been a rough transition for her due to significant behavioral disturbances she has experienced in the school and multiple classrooms. There were many days at the beginning of this year, she came home in tears talking about fights she had seen during the day. She had nightmares in which she re-experienced the day's trauma. She was most upset by peer-to-peer violence, as well as peers disrespectful and at times even aggressive comments towards her teachers. She talked about full classes of PE during which they were not able to participate in any kind of physical activity because the teachers were dealing with significant behavioral problems for the duration of the class. She was frustrated reporting that she sat through entire academic classes without being taught material because the teachers were dealing with extreme disciplinary issues. I was unsure of the reality of her perceptions, and so I met with the teachers, and they confirmed this reality. I have been quite impressed thus far with the administration's response to these problems. Through my daughter's report, I learned that the day after one of these fights in the classroom, not the first fight, not the last fight, but it was a particularly challenging one, the principal and the assistant principal came into the classroom and they sat down with every single student. They sat together and they talked about how they, that each child was affected by what they saw, and as my daughter said, "Mom," they talked to us about how we can all work together to keep the classroom safer. I was impressed by the administration's knowledge and implementation of a trauma-informed care model, as well as a restorative justice model. This example seemed to me like they understood the significant effect this disruptive behavior was having on all the students. We know about trauma's effect on children's development. I'm grateful when there's a natural disaster, a safety drill, or other significant event in the school, we are notified immediately as parents. In regards to trauma-informed care, we know that these major events have effects on children. However, we also know that being exposed repeatedly to violence, even on a smaller scale, especially if the child perceives a feeling that things are out of their control, can have just as much of an effect. This is what has been occurring. I sent an email out inviting parents who had the same concerns to let me know and form a committee, and I have been inundated. I, I'm, clerical is not one of my strengths, and I can't keep up with all these emails of parent stories and parents' concerns, parents within our social group, but parents far outside our social group that we've never met before.
So you only have about 15 seconds?
Today, I'm asking the board to require notified parents when there's behavioral issues such that it's significant enough to affect other children's emotionally or disrupt their learning. By no means we ask for any privacy violations, we would not ask for any identifying information, but please make us aware of these situations so we can figure out how to best help our kids and also figure out if our children's perceptions kids and also figure out if our children's perceptions is a reality or lack thereof. There's more. Thank you all for your time.
Please feel free to email me, email the board your comments in addition to, that would be helpful.
Other parents' comments, too?
We are...
Yes, okay, thank you.
And if there are meetings that we might, some of us might want to attend, we'd be good to organize that.
We'll be in touch with you.
The other parents would love that, so happy to, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Appreciate your time and comments. Any other comments? Mr. Scharf, you have three minutes, please state your name and your address.
My name is Graham Scharf. I live at 808 Village Road. I have one daughter at Johnson Elementary School and one daughter here at CHS. I met with Summerlin Thompson, the principal of Johnson Elementary School, this week and asked, "What would help you as the principal of this school?" And she said, "We need more resources for supporting the sort of behavioral support that Allison Pillow, the fantastic guidance counselor, already provides." And Mr. Jonathan, who provides the TPT support, those two people simply cannot support the number of children who need behavioral support. So as you consider the budget this year, please consider that, that if you cannot do it this year, it will be needed next year. I'm sure Dr. Hastings would say the same. He has devoted significant resources to this sort of behavioral support that Ms. Santiago mentioned. And I would mention, as a parent with a rising, I can be Ms. Santiago, my time's up. As a parent of a rising fifth grader, I am deeply concerned about the disruptive behavior at Walker. I personally know families who have withdrawn their children from this school during this school year, right? Not, they didn't choose another school because it was more convenient or they liked it, but because the disruptive behavior so harmed their children's learning environment that they could not stay in the school this year. I want that to be a clarion call to the board that something needs to be done in supporting Dr. Hastings, in providing additional space for students, and potentially in establishing the appropriate Lugo McGinnis Academy at Walker to provide the appropriate learning environment for students who need that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scharf. Any other comments at this time? Ms. Smith, you have three minutes, please state your name and your address.
Deedee Smith, 2652 Jefferson Park Circle. And I just, it's the first time I've seen the budget, but just a couple of things that I'd hope that you would ask as you look at the budget is to look at the number of classrooms that have had to be added because of children who live outside the city. And it is five to six this year, it was about the same last year. It's mostly focused at Greenbrier where there are more than fifty children who do not live in our city, most of whom are not teachers' children, too. Although teachers' children, per policy, also just don't get their automatic choice. I mean, there has to be room in the school. I know Burnley Moran was quite crowded this year. There's, I think, maybe twenty-five, thirty children who don't live in the city there. But another option you could have to actually redistribute your load on some of these schools is, and Burnley Moran is a fantastic example, is allow some of those children who you bus to Burnley Moran but who live much closer to their own neighborhood school, just allow them, give them the option to go to their neighborhood school. You don't have to wholesale redistrict anybody. But I can imagine you'd get some redistribution, some voluntary redistribution if you offered that to all of our children and our families who are being bused away from their neighborhood school. And do keep in mind that you do already have policies that wholesale are allowing families who have many more resources to move their children into their choice schools. So you have to be aware of that, too, because that's where you're going to see some of this need for adding teachers at some schools when you have plenty of space at some of the others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other public comment at this time? Okay. The next item on the agenda is board member comments. I will start on this side with Ms. Torres.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to everybody else who came up and shared, so appreciate public comment as always. Couple of things I've had the opportunity to do in the last month. I was invited to attend the Sunrise Community Center, which is a local group affiliated with Habitat, and it coincided and we were able to coordinate it to be one of the many Equity Community Outreach Meetings. So we were able to meet with several of the families and community members there, Dr. Atkins, Beth Chuck, Ms. Coleman. Am I missing anybody else?
That was it.
Were able to present the questions on the topics that have come up through our other Equity Groups in the larger settings and bring those to the smaller group and allow the parents to walk around and kind of vote on those topics again. And then we opened it up for discussion. We had actually a high school student who was able to share and provide a lot of insight and feedback on her experiences, so that was really valuable and I was grateful to be able to participate in that. I also attended the Jackson Vaya PTO Budget Presentation to them, so that was nice to be in that setting and meet some of the parents there. Several of us, and I was able to, this was my first opportunity to attend in Washington, DC, the NSBA Equity Symposium, and then also the Legislative and Federal Advocacy Symposium, so that was great to, and first off, I guess Ms. Perrier and I were able to attend the Equity Symposium on Saturday, had the opportunity to attend different workshops, heard some really dynamic speakers. I believe she's a doctor, Dr. Sumner, or Candace Sumner. And if anybody has the opportunity to listen to, she has a wonderful TED Talk about public education. She's from Boston. And I did tweet and invite her to come to Charlottesville because I thought she would be dynamic here. And her takeaway was that equity is a revolution. And I think that's where we are at with a lot of these things. And was also able to attend a couple of really great sessions later in the day and then also was able to participate and meet with the rest of the Virginia School Board Representatives, meeting with Senator Kane and Warner. So that was a great opportunity. And also then to get to learn really what is on the agenda for NSBA this year and what they're trying to advocate for. And so that was exciting and I look forward to going back to that. And then also participated this week, there was a webinar that was offered by VSBA on equity in Virginia public schools. So that was an hour-long, just via phone type of opportunity that I was able to do, so I took some notes and have some information on that that I'll bring back to the board and then also with the Equity Committee as we continue to work on that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I just would like to add another comment to what I had said previously about some of the things that I've been participating in. And the comments to refer to guests today about what's happening at Walker and Johnson, I just want to share with you something that I will be doing Monday at Burnley Moran. They have a program there called Heroes, Hero Boys Running Club, that really is going to be focusing on character building, right decision-making, and it's an eight-week program and at the end they're going to have like a 5K race. And I'm going to, first of all, I'm not going to teach them how to run.
But are you running that way?
I'm not going to teach them how to run, so, no. But I want to talk with them about one of the things that are going to happen, I think they'll be calling them Mr. Bryant as well, about character and different aspects of it over the eight weeks. And I think that, you know, that there's an effort to really start working with our students at a young age about how to, you know, when they get in different situations, how to handle it. And I think that programs like this is going in the right direction. But I appreciate your comments and they are duly noted, trust me, by the board. So thank you for coming out.
And before I move on to the table, I was wondering if our student rep has any comments or... Okay. I didn't want you to be last, I didn't want you to be first, I was, anyway. So thank you again for coming in. Mr. Bryant?
First of all, I want to thank all of you all who came forth with your comments and concerns. We do appreciate it and certain that the board will take a look and have a discussion in regards to your concerns. About a week ago, Velvet Coleman was at Mount Zion First African Baptist Church with the Equity Feedback, and I was asked to assist her in that because she had to leave early. And a lot of my church members and community members came after church to provide feedback with the little dots that you all may remember that you've done over at here at Charlottesville High School. So we got a lot of feedback on that. On the 20th of February, I will be a guest reader for Ms. Stephanie Coleman's class for third graders, so I'll get a chance to go over to read to the third graders. She's already designated my book for me to read and I'm excited about that. If you have not had a chance, the Bridge Progressive Arts Initiative had the opening night on last Friday. Ms. Perrier and another church member of mine accompanied me to that opening and it was portraits of our vibrant city. Also, Ms. Mitsiko's son was a part of that portrait unveiling, and it also had a couple of actually former Charlottesville high school students presented in this year's portrait unveiling. If you have not had a chance to see it, they are open on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, Friday and Saturday from twelve to ten.
I'll go tomorrow.
And Sunday from twelve to four. I guarantee you, you're going to like the exhibit.
Picture of him. It's really nice.
Yes, my artist, Amanda Finn, is the artist that worked with me and she did an outstanding job. I was quite pleased with my portrait. And that's all that I have.
Dr. Kraft?
Very briefly, I am really hearing the concerns that were expressed tonight about behavioral issues in our schools and maybe particularly at Walker, but not only at Walker. And I would like, as a board member, to sort of be able to take a deeper dive into this and I'd like to have a better understanding of what we are trying to do and how it is working and what else may be needed to correct this. So I'm really hearing the concerns that you brought to us and appreciate it very much.
Ms. Perrier? Any comments at this time? I also want to thank everybody for participating today in the public comments. Also want to say thank you to Mr. Mickey, Mistakus, and Mr. Scharf for their applications. Again, we're really looking forward to have another voice on the board to replace Ms. Lauffer at the end of this month. So thank you for your applications. I just wanted to also give, to let people know what I have been doing in addition to all the other things. As the Washington, I did also go to the advocacy conference the NSBA put on in DC. That was a couple of days after I went to the new chair orientation in Richmond that the Virginia School Boards Association puts on, which could have, unfortunately, had been postponed from the week before, so I probably could have had that a week before and would have benefited from that. And we also met with the county leadership, the school board and the county school board leadership met with the superintendents, which I thought was a really productive conversation. And we then, yeah, so I think that will lead to hopefully more collaboration in the future with the county, at least cooperation. So it's always good to meet face to face and talk. So also wanted to say thank you to Josh Mandell of the Charlottesville Tomorrow. First of all, Charlottesville Tomorrow has been great education reporting and we're so appreciative of their efforts over the years. And Josh, I don't know how long you've been here, but it feels like forever. And we're going to...
It's been very long.
I know that you're like fourteen years old, so it hasn't been that long.
I'm twenty-five.
You know, I know that because of Facebook.
Ready for the big city now.
Your mom on Facebook. So we really appreciate your reporting and your details and just letting the community know what we do as a school board and a school division. It's just, we cannot tell you how important it is, the work that you've been doing. And thank you, and we wish you so much greatness in the future.
And you're abandoning us, you know, so...
You are. You can come to the mic and, because, you know, I think the other reporter in the room has some things that she would like to report on, right? If you have any comments, we would love to hear them, but we really do wish you well.
Thank you. I don't have any comments, but...
Interesting.
I appreciate it, really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Good luck to you. So that's all comments that I have. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too echo and thank everyone who came to offer comments about our budget or comments about concerns that they have at Walker. Transitions are difficult at any age, and especially transitions are difficult when you think about a student being eleven, twelve years old into the fifth grade and the sixth grade, and then the next transition will be to Buffett when they get to the seventh grade. I applaud Dr. Hastings, he's done incredibly good job. He's jumped in with both feet, even with his yellow tennis shoes and his orange tennis shoes. And just those little movements that he's made at the school has really endeared him to the students and the students to him. So they are well underway in developing meaningful relationships at Walker Elementary School and amongst students and teachers and the entire staff there, so I applaud them for the work. Some of the behaviors at the school have been challenging, but I would not want those behaviors to overshadow all of the incredibly good work that the teachers are doing. This year, they went through a huge transition in their master scheduling. So the master schedule this year is quite different than it was last year, and that has been a part of the transition also that's going on at Walker. But support for our teachers and support for our students and support for helping our students to make adjustments to that social, emotional interaction that has to happen in a seamless way in a community environment like a school. So we are there to support and we will provide the support for our teachers and our students that they need to make sure and to ensure that seamless integration. We also call on our community, to our families and to our homes. A big part of what we do in school connects with home. It connects with home prior to our students coming to school, and then it connects with home again when our students go, leave our schools and go home. And we will say to our families, "We can't do this work alone." We need all of our families to be a part of the work that we may support our families and our families support us in the education of our students. I think one of our speakers tonight mentioned the percentage of time that students actually spend in school. So we want to join hands together with our community, our teachers and everyone to make sure that we have healthy environments in the community and healthy environments within our school buildings. So thank you for your comments, and we do want to work together to make sure we have those healthy learning environments. So thank you so much. Some of our comments and some of the activities that have been going on around our school division and outside of our school division, I was invited to the University of Virginia, the, oh, I'm sorry, University of Richmond. There has been a discussion a number of weeks going on there with Dr. Keith McIntosh, who is the Vice President and Chief Information Officer for the university, and they've been having... And they've been having some lunch chats around racism and the discussion of racism. So I was invited to talk about some of the feelings and interactions and emotions that surrounded the August 12th incidents and also some of the actions that have taken place and incidents have taken place since August 12th. It was a really healthy discussion, and it helped the Richmond, our University of Richmond community better understand the Charlottesville community. So those two worlds were brought together. Also, congratulations to one of our own, Zora Hurd, who attended Charlottesville High School and graduated in 2009. Zora has attended the University of Virginia, and she's in the Curry School for Teaching. She's finishing up her master's degree in teaching, and she's in the School of Education, and she will be joining Charlottesville City Schools as a teacher in 2019, 20. So we had the pleasure of offering her an early contract. So we say welcome aboard, Zora. We are looking forward to having you. Her parents actually were in Charlottesville City Schools. Her mom was a teacher, English teacher at Beaufort Middle School, and her father was our Director of HR for a number of years. Mike Hurd was here for a number of years with us. So congratulations to Zora and welcome home. Black History Month, February 1st is the beginning of Black History Month, and I'll say a little bit more about that after I finish the presentation. But Charlottesville, we have a number of activities going on in our schools and will continue throughout this month and beyond this month. Charlottesville High School will have its annual speaker series, including a film screening and panel discussion here at Charlottesville High School. So please look on their website, get dates and times, and make yourself available to join them as they celebrate the richness of black history. Greenbrier Elementary School will have an MLK celebration, and that should be on our website also. I had the pleasure of going to Jackson Villa Preschool to visit Kristen Edwards', our preschool classroom. Kristen is the daughter of Holly Edwards, and she is one of our preschool teachers. And it was just a pleasure watching her teach our four-year-old students. So thank you, Kristen, for inviting me to your class. And I have some other visits that I'll be making also for Black History Month. Equity forums, Mr. Bryant just mentioned that we took our equity forum format to Mount Zion Baptist Church and Mount Zion First African Baptist Church to get input from the congregation there. So thank you to Mr. Bryant for helping to facilitate that and all of our community members who are a part of it. Ms. Torres told you about the Habitat for Humanity that was, that was inspiring to be there with some of our senior citizens and some of our citizens who are not seniors, who gave us great input. We had students there also who gave us incredible input about our lunch program, what they like about it, what they don't like about it, and how they would recommend that we change that program. So thank you for all of that input. Charlottesville High School Basketball, congratulations to those Black Knight boys and girls. The girls finished tied for second place in the district and regional standings. Our boys finished the season with a bang by upsetting our top-ranked Louisa County on a road game last night. So congratulations to our boys and to our girls. The Jefferson District Tournament starts this Friday, and we will host a boys double header. The girls will host Louisa at 6:00 PM, and the boys will be playing Orange at 7:30. The semifinals for this tournament will be on Monday, and the finals will be on Tuesday. And we'll determine the sites after we have those playoffs on Friday. So congratulations to all of the basketball players, all of the teams, and we have some real, some real stars on both of those teams that we'll be bringing before you at a later date to recognize and honor them. Congratulations also to our CHS Bacon team. They are third. Now, not third in the region, not third in the state, not even third in the country, but third in the world in their competition. Congratulations. And Ms. McKeever said, that's her boy. So look there, you can see her sign, who's on that team. So congratulations to all of our students, and congratulations to Matt Shields and the entire team. That's pretty impressive, third in the world. So congratulations. As I've said, this is Black History Month. To me, it's one of the most important months of the year. It's the month in which we celebrate the accomplishments and the contributions of our black community to not only Charlottesville City, but to our Commonwealth and to our nation. Black History Month actually started off as Black History Day, and the first Black History Day, excuse me, Black History Week was celebrated in February 1926. So it's been around for quite a long time. We all know that Carter G. Woodson and a forerunner, W.E.B. Du Bois, were the inspiration, inspirational voices behind the start of Black History Week. So we thank them and honor them for their efforts in getting this recognition started. After the nation celebrated that Black History Week for a number of years, it was in 1976 that we moved from a Black History Week to a Black History Month. I look forward to the day that we will have a celebration of the contributions of the black people and the black culture from being a month, a week, to having it being a part of our everyday discussion and our everyday consciousness. So thank you to our teachers, and thank you to all of the students who are in our school system, to all of our, all of our teachers, but specifically during Black History Month. Thank you to all of our black teachers. Thank you to all of our black students, our black educators, our black leaders, all of our black custodians and instructional assistants. We celebrate you, and we celebrate your history and your ancestors and the people who are represented by everything that we do in Charlottesville City and in our school system. Over the weekend, I had the pleasure of singing one of the most inspirational songs that anyone could ever sing, and especially as a black female, singing this song really touches my heart. So I thought a fitting tribute to the start of Black History Month would be for us to join in our very own, a school board member, Mr. Bryant, who will lead us in singing, "Lift Every Voice and Sing." We have the words that will be displayed on the screen. Mr. Bryant will lead us in that singing, and we have placed at each board member's a seat a copy of the lyrics. And so, Mr. Bryant, I'm going to turn it over to you, and you can direct us from here.
Y'all please sing, sing, "Lift Every Voice and Sing." I will do my best to lead.
He's going.
Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoice sing wise, high as a listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chastening rod. Felt in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with a steady beat have not our weary feet. Come to the place for which our fathers sired. We have come over a way that with tears has been watered. We have come treading our path through the blood of the slaughter. Out of a gloomy past till now we stand at last. Where the white gleam of our bright star is cast. God of our worries, God of our silent tears. Thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. Thou who hast by thy might led us into the light. Keep us forever in the path we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we met thee. Lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forgave thee. Shadow beneath thy hand may we forever stand. True to our God, true to our native land.
What a wonderful way to open Black History Month. So thank you, Mr. Bryant. That was incredible. I would encourage all of our listening audience and all of our audience, if you get a chance to go back through the words of that song, the lyrics have incredible meaning to the black race. It talks about the chastening rod. It talks about and makes reference to when our people were in slavery, and the chastening rod was a bitter pill for us to swallow, our ancestors, and the roads that we have trotted along the way and where we are today in that journey. So it brings all of our history back to this point, forward to this point, and it gives us hope, not just as a black people, but as a nation and as a Commonwealth. It gives us hope that the mistakes that we have made in the past, that we will put those in the past and not repeat those same mistakes in the future, that there is a way forward for all of us, but the only way forward that we can go is that we go together. And if there's anyone who doesn't want to go together as a country and a Commonwealth, we invite them to stay behind, but we have to move on. We have to move forward. So thank you, Mr. Bryant. We celebrate Black History Month, and thank you to all of our teachers and our board members for all that you have done. Thank you, Ms. McKeever.
Thank you, Dr. Watkins.
Mr. Bryant, thank you. I, let's see, we're doing the work session wrap-up at this point. Okay. So, before our upcoming meetings, I'm just going to acknowledge that this is Ms. Sando, Frida Sando's last meeting. Thank you so much for all that you've contributed over the past several months, being our student rep to the board. We appreciate all the input that our students give us, so thank you. I am also going to list our next several meetings that are up on the board, but on February 12th, we are having a work session at K-Tech at 3:00 PM. And then, is that K-Tech? The work session is on February 12th at K-Tech at 3:00 PM. On February 21st, there is a school board budget approval meeting. That's also when we will be appointing our newest school board member, interim school board member. That's February 21st here at 5:00 PM, Thursday, February 21st. And the March 7th is our next regularly scheduled school board meeting, the first Thursday of the month, March 7th, 5:00 PM here at Charlottesville High School. Hearing objections, we stand adjourned.